Good evening, everybody. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Davis, will you lead us?
Thank you for all standing. Place your hand on your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Russi. Councilmember Lau.
Present.
Councilmember Crosby. And for the benefit of the audience, Councilmember Crosby is attending remotely. His address was posted on the agenda of where he is locating. Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Present.
Mayor Hepburn.
Present. Bob, for the postponed meeting.
Did any of you, I can go grab a copy of it. Well, announcements. Does anybody have any announcements from the group that would like to make right now? Or wait till public comment? Please. Ms. Berry.
I'm going to make it now because I just found out that the town hall meeting for tomorrow has been postponed. So tons of people have been planning and preparing and getting it on the calendar and getting registered, and now it's in January. So I'm sure you're going to address that later, but just wanted to make sure it got maybe a couple mentions.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on any announcements? Okay. On that note, thank you, Pam. I appreciate that. It has been postponed. I cannot do this with these glasses. It's been postponed until January 5th. Craig, you want to?
If you.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, and then I want to say a couple other words if you don't mind.
Yes, we became aware today that the probation commission town hall meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow to talk about the realignment and the permanent placement of some additional youth in Alpha Ball Page as well as other facilities has been postponed to January 5th. That meeting will still be virtually, and at 6:00 PM, there was information that is put out and also posted on our website explaining the reasoning for their need to move the meeting. However, we also did have an additional correspondence that was brought to us by county supervisor Barker encouraging residents to participate in the Board of Supervisors meeting tomorrow. I know it's late notice, but that one is at 9:30, and suggested, and this is also on our website, of talking points to encourage the Board of Supervisors to be aware of the concerns that we all share with that facility and identifying an alternative location, the camp out in Silmar. So those are all information that's available. I also think there will be other Board of Supervisors meetings that will be coming up that we will have more notice on in the future, that we will be able to get out to the public to also participate in those. So, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Russi. And it's important to note, too, that with the new supervisory districts, that Solis now takes the Arrow Corridor. She did get the Arrow Corridor on the south of Laverne, which is the EIFD Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, along with Fairplex. So there's a couple schools of thought here. Two supervisors, five votes, you get two of them. So bottom line is, guys, we need to pressure these people. We need to pressure them. We need to write. We need to call. And I did post, thank you, Pam, and I posted on my social media, John Blickenstaff, our previous mayor of 27 years, is very much upset about this, and exact words were, "This is the most serious thing that's ever going to face our community ever." And we need to be on top of it. We need to be united. I appreciate the people that got the social media people, the newscasters, on the march this Saturday. Thank you, guys. I know that Cynthia Gavaldon and Joe Gavaldon, I know that Pam Berry, I know that Rick Bowen got a number of the channels, and Denise Boecamp got a number of these channels out there. And it's just good to see residents with them talking to these people and getting it out there on the social media because, like I said, John Blickenstaff, I had him do a Minute with the Mayor with me, and then another snippet, and I did a Minute with the Mayor. This is the most important thing that we have to focus on, and we must be united, and we must pull out of the stops, and you must contact your supervisors, you must contact the probation department, the sheriff department, whoever's on those lists, you must bombard them with information, and factual information. You know, our community is more than generous over the 60-plus years that Alpha Ball Page has been there. Also, we have David and Margaret. We have Leroy Haynes, you know, San Dimas with Camp Rocky, with McKinley. Our community has done a lot. And you know what? It's just very difficult for me to just, they come into our community without letting us know what's going on, to check these places out, and just at seat at the table. My goodness, the police, city management, elected officials, what are you going to do here? What's the deal? So united as a front, we must all get our county supervisors, be cordial, email, call. They've been calling back, too, but Solis is now one of ours. We need to make sure we put pressure on that. So it's very important. Don't let up on the pedal right now, guys, because it's going to bite us. It's going to bite us, and we can't let that happen.
Tim, on that same subject.
Yes.
Do you know if the county supervisors are meeting in person, such as is their chamber open to the public, or is it all Zoom?
I did check. It's all virtual.
It is now?
Yeah. We will be monitoring that to see if they do switch to some type of hybrid, but at this point, they are still doing all virtual meetings.
Okay, because I was thinking it would make a real impact if we go down there, too.
I was thinking that same thing. Unfortunately, they're not.
Okay.
And I will say that Bob Russi, our city manager, and our social media page, he's posting the videos with John Blickenstaff. He's posting, they're posting everything we possibly can to get information out to you guys with contacts, supervisors' information. Anything that comes up, we're posting it immediately. So please, we're trying. We're working as a team here, all of our council members, the city, and then we're working on San Dimas, who's really involved, working on Glendora, working on Claremont, because this is a rich issue with all of our Foothill communities here. So it's very important, and San Dimas is on top of it right now with us also. So we're working on that. I know Bob Russi's working on it, so.
Just one other comment. In the information that's being disseminated, that's gone out on the website and on social media, I know I've sent out information to a couple folks about Catherine Barker's contact info as well as the probation oversight committee, but there was a note in one of the postings that indicates another entity that is actually, that is helping the decision-making body. And so there is like some, in the helpful tips, it does indicate to send your comments and your notes to that entity as well. And so, you know, even if it's the same email, it doesn't matter, just change who it's to and make sure it goes out. But if you are on social media, if you talk to your friends, you know, and I just did it right before I came to the meeting, too, share it out, because I know it's last minute that a lot of people were preparing for the meeting tomorrow, and now it's being switched. And to Bob's point earlier, although they're saying have people come to the meeting tomorrow at 9:30, I know people work, I know that may not jive with your schedules because you didn't know about it. They did also include an email address so that you could send your public comment. And there are two more meetings, I think, before the January 5th. Is that for the Board of Supervisors?
I don't know if there's two before January 5th. There may be one more.
One more.
As soon as we get that schedule, which we hope to get from Barker's staff soon, we will share that out, too.
Okay. Thank you. So just be on the lookout for it. Tell your friends.
And as far as what the response can contain, I mean, there's a lot of good information out there. The police department sent a letter, I think that's public. There's good information there. There's good information from the superintendent of the schools. Our joint letter that went from council to Barker and others has a lot of great content in it. And Supervisor Barker also sent some information that's going to be posted on the website about where to direct their focus. And so I would capture that information that's on the website in that section and really help them, because it's one thing, and it's important to say that this is not where we want you to put people, but it's just as important to say, here is a site that you should be looking at, because once you give them that solution, that helps them move to that direction.
We don't want to be known as NIMBYs, which we're not. The point is, is that facility was made for a whole different purpose, and it has served the purpose. But again, these people and these youth that are talking about, they live 60, 70 miles away from our present location here now, and there's a couple. There's Barry J. Nidorf, which is in Somar, and then there's Los Pedrinos, which is closed, which is in Downey, right next to the probation department, right next to the buildings. I mean, it's, there's places. Not that it's in our backyard, but the point is, is that it doesn't suit the purpose any longer. And I must remind you guys, too, it's very important to know, because I was on the meeting with the commission, which is Adam Bettino, he's the juvenile justice realignment block grant, and then also the commission. Very negative about just the fact that they want to make a decision. Basically, the bottom line is what they said was, we're going to make this decision. No one's going to be happy with it. They're just going to make it, and we don't really care, basically is what it boils down to. The point is, is that the commission recommends the county supervisors make the decisions, because this is their areas where they're going to have to be putting these youth. And so the ultimate decision comes from the supervisors. Contact everyone, but make your focus for the people that are going to make the final decision. So we all have to be on this together. We're all in this together. We need to really do save this, save our community. It's the most important thing probably we're going to be faced with for a long time.
And if I could just piggyback real quick on what you said, I know everybody in every city where there is a camp or is near a camp is saying, "Not in my backyard, not in my backyard." So I think to the mayor's point, that's why all the facts that the residents brought up during the in-person meeting that happened a couple weeks ago are the points that need to be brought up. You know, the fire hazard, the ingress and egress through residential, you know, all of those things have to be brought to light. And then to Mayor, Pro Tem Davis's point, compared to what is more suitable. So we need to direct them to something that is more suitable and not just say, "Not us, not us," because that's not going to, everybody's saying, "Not us, not us." So.
And also, why do we have 707B offenders there now? We didn't even know about it, which was brought up in the meeting, our virtual, our town hall meeting. So focus, focus on what the realities are, focus on the generosity that our city has given over the 60, 70 years for Los Angeles County, when this was farmland out here, guys, farmland. There was nothing north of Foothill. It was all citrus. It was, you know, so we got to stay focused on this. And information sharing is the most important thing of all. We must share information. If it comes out, let's get it out there fast. And, you know, social media is the most wonderful thing in the world now, because we can all communicate within minutes. So if anything happens, I know the city will, we will, as council, we'll get it out to everybody. So stay tuned. Mr. Russi, do we have anything pulled from the consent calendar?
You have two items that have been requested to be pulled. One is item 5A, the minutes, and 5C, the Youth and Family Action Committee appointment.
Can we go ahead and make a vote on the rest of the, on the consent calendar? We'll hold those.
You may, but we have to do a roll call vote, because we have Councilmember Crosby.
Yes. So is there any questions from council on the consent calendar as it's stated?
No.
Then do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Excuse me. We never let Mr. Crosby speak. Did he have anything to say?
He didn't raise his hand, so we're good.
Okay, we're good. Second?
I'll make that second.
Vote, please.
Councilmember Lau?
Yes.
Councilmember Crosby?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Hepburn?
Yes.
And Mayor, if we can, before we move on to these other items, which are important to address, I just want to bring to everyone's clarity that one of the resolutions that we passed was for the fire chief, I'm sorry, police chief, that we've had Colleen Flores as captain be waiting to become the new police chief. So I just want to recognize that this evening, we have just officially approved her contract, and she will become our new police chief at the beginning of the next month, or at the end of this month, depending on how you define when exactly things happen. At the same point in time, I also want to pay tribute and recognize Nick Paz, our police chief, and who has served our city for many decades, and thank him for the wonderful work that he's done for us.
I'll pass that on.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Very welcome. Then we will go to 5A.
Yes, that was the minutes, and it was pulled by Mr. Bowen.
We're going to go straight to the audience. We'll open up public comment. Mr. Bowen?
Good evening, council. I'd like the minutes to properly reflect the vote. At the, at the bottom of where the vote took place regarding ordinance 1107, the last five lines or so, it says, "At the November 15, 2021 meeting, council approved a vote by three to two, and in parentheses, Hepburn voted no." It makes no note that Mr. Crosby also voted no.
He did not.
Three to two is two people.
But the ordinance, the vote on the ordinance was four to one.
I'm not finished yet. So there was two votes. There was a vote at 2:00 hours, 37 minutes, and 04 seconds, Mr. Crosby voted no on five districts. That's not noted on here. In reading this, it looks like Tim Hepburn was the only one that voted. I believe Mr. Crosby should be noted, since you want to put this in print. It also, then it goes on to say that by a vote of four to one, Hepburn voted no, and introduced and placed in first reading ordinance. So at 2:00 hours, 37 minutes, and 4 seconds, Crosby voted no on five districts. At 2:00 hours, 37, or 38 minutes, a minute later, Davis made it clear he supported the five different district map that kept all the council members in their own districts. Just by that admission, I think that's horribly wrong. But then at seven minutes later, at 2:4515, Mr. Crosby voted yes to five districts protecting his seat. I wish he was here, because this shows, I believe, your hypocrisy at the best. All residents lost 80% of their voting rights, one time per year, per four years, versus currently two or three times per every couple of years, if that's the way I read this. This is what voter suppression looks like. Shame on you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Anybody else wish to speak on this? We'll close public comment and bring it up to the, would you like to respond?
Yeah, just, we will note the correction as it relates to the 3-2 vote, that it was Hepburn and Crosby that voted no. That is an accurate correction that we will make. Thank you.
Any discussion on this item, council?
No.
Do we want to go ahead with item C, and then we'll take both these at one time? Mr. Cress? We do that?
Yes.
Item 5C, that was pulled, Mr. Russi, is that correct?
Yes, that was Mrs. Boecamp that asked to have that item pulled.
Ms. Boecamp, would you like to speak on that? Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for pulling that from the consent calendar, but I defer the comments to Mrs. Kathy Newlin.
Thank you, Ms. Newlin.
Kathy Newlin, Foothill Terrace, Laverne. I ask for this item to be pulled from the consent calendar, because this favoritism and nepotism of lifelong employees of the city take away the opportunities from residents who would like to get involved. The city is always encouraging people to get involved, but how can they when positions are swooped up by previous police chiefs and mayors? Where, when, and how was this position opening posted for the people to be made aware of it? This cannot continue to happen. If any, in any organization, there needs to be a committee made up of a variety of general public. I believe this way of choosing candidates needs to be restructured. Maybe since the city has been divided into districts, each candidate for these committees should also be chosen from each district to keep things fair.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else wish to speak on this? We'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it up deus. Robin, would you like to talk on this?
I would, since I'm the chair of the Youth and Family, and Rick Crosby is the vice chair. I want to explain the process. Obviously, it wasn't seen by you, but we flew the position. Actually, let me go back a little bit. Carolyn Cockrell stepped down from her position on the board, and so we have had a vacancy. It was actually Rick Crosby that brought up to our committee, right in this room, that we need to fly it to open it up. And so we did. How long did we fly it for? Two weeks?
Two and a half weeks.
Two and a half weeks, we flew it out there. It was on the website. Anybody could have applied. Nobody applied but one person, Don Kendrick, applied, and he has been on this committee since almost the inception of the, you know, group, Youth and Family. And so with the full, it could have just been the board making the recommendation, but we took it from the whole committee as the recommendation, since we only had one applicant, and he is so qualified. He started hands-on history with the school district, and he's been involved in everything with, you know, youth. And he's the only one that applied. So that's why we made the recommendation from our subcommittee to the council. So if you have any questions from our committee, Rick or I could answer that.
Mr. Crosby?
And, yes, and please, JR, if you could explain how we flew this position as well, because this position was flown in every which way, and same as we do for all of our commission groups as well. So we had it posted on two of our agendas for our YFAC meeting to discuss, too, but this, this position was flown on our district website, I mean, city website, and through other social media places, too. So it wasn't just trying to, there was no backdoor feelings or doings. And so Mr. Kendrick has been part of YFAC, has actually attended almost every meeting since 1994, felt that he was a great candidate for being part of it.
And then just to confirm, just to confirm, this was flown per the Brown Act, because YFAC does fall under Brown Act considerations, and we had the notice sent to the city clerk for his approval, and it was posted on our website, as well as in the public areas of the building, and pushed out through social media as well.
Council, any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to go further on that. I was going to comment to thank Carolyn Cockrell for being our representative from the city, sitting on this committee for many years, her valuable input. She's a counselor over at Roynon, and she's very valuable in this community. So I want to thank her publicly for her dedication to the Youth and Family Action Committee. And then also, we reappointed Denise Fisher. She's been on our board. She is very involved in our community and a great person to have on our board. So I'm so thrilled to have her back.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter, do you have any comments?
Sir, I'll just add one thing. Our YFAC meetings are open. They're the fourth Tuesday of the month. Anybody's welcome. I mentioned in my report that we have many participants. The school districts is very involved and has staff there. Several members from the police department attend regularly. And then we just have community members that also participate and do a lot of great for our, for our community's youth.
Thank you, JR. Mr. Davis, any comment? I just want to say that actually, when this, when this position came up, I actually called JR. I think I was probably the first one to say, "What's the method?" As being a new mayor. First, it was going to be appointed, and then he realized that, no, it's, it has to be posted, and it has to be posted out to the public. So, and Don Kendrick's got a massive amount of experience with YFAC. I'm not going to say, forget all about the political realm of this. He's been involved ever since the inception, and he's done a fantastic job. The point is, no one else applied. His position's up in 2022, June of 2022. So if people do want to do that, but he gives, he comes with a wealth of experience and knowledge, he's only going to help this. This YFAC committee is really for our children and our youth, publicizing whether it be tobacco use, drug abuse, or whatever the situation, mental awareness, things of that such. And they do a fantastic job. So I think that if people want to do this, we need to, we do post it, and I've always been a proponent of transparency, open governance, and also put your time out there. If you want to do this, it takes citizens to do this. I mean, to be able to donate your time for these committees. And like I say, no one else applied, and Don Kendrick was there, and it was a great shoe-in. And I will say, on behalf of Karen Cockrell, she's given so much to this community, you know, so much, and we were going to miss her, and Denise has been on the committee for how long, Robin?
Well, she's only been on for two years.
But she's got, but she's been.
But she's been a community member that's been coming for many, many years.
She's been involved off the committee, but as, as an outside person watching from in. So, but I, like I say, involve yourself. Get on these meetings. You can go online, you can watch virtually, you know, put yourself out there. Like I say, June 2022, that position's up. If other people want to file for that position, you have every right to, and it'll be considered by the Youth and Family Action Committee and come to the council for appointment, so.
Mr. Mayor, you need a motion to approve the minutes as corrected and make the YFAC appointment.
We have both. We have 5A and 5C. Okay. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the city council minutes as corrected and accept the YFAC recommendation and appointments.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Lau?
Yes.
Councilmember Crosby?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Hepburn?
Yes.
Thank you.
And before we move on, I would also like to join my council in thanking Ms. Cockrell for her support in our community and her service to YFAC, and also welcome and thank Don Kendrick for applying for the position posted, and thank Denise Fisher for renewing her commitment to YFAC.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Davis. We move to public comments. Is that correct, Mr. Russi? We will go ahead and open the floor. We have a couple cards here for people wish to speak. If you're just asked to state your name and your address, if you've already got a card, we're good. And just please keep your mask on, if you don't mind, just to, let's keep ourselves in compliant. We have Susan Carson.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
It's a good time of the year to reflect. I might need a little more than three minutes. Hopefully not.
You're good.
Good time of the year to reflect on the achievements of our city, the council, and our mayor. I personally want to applaud all our council and the committee in the hiring of Chief Nigg and the approval of all of his recommendations. I live right on Bonita, so I'm only a block from the, from the fire department and the police department, and I'm hearing and seeing our own paramedics and our own ambulance several times a day going by my house, and it's very heartwarming to know that our citizens are getting the best that Laverne has to offer. And I just want to thank you all for that, because it's really refreshing. Unfortunately, this last year is not ending on a positive note with the looming threat of the camps changing to prisons. The meeting at Oak Mesa School was amazing with, even with the short notice. Over 100 citizens rallied to fight for our city. So many people spoke and expressed their concerns, all valid. So many people applauded our mayor, who spoke for our heart, our city, for Laverne, and we all really appreciated it. And as he should, as any mayor or elected official of the city should, he spoke to represent the citizens and the residents. My heart was filled with gratitude and pride, and I just personally want to thank you, Tim. It was very heartfelt. To close, I know many of you all attend the same church, so I've heard, but regardless, I'm expecting your churches all observe the golden rule. It isn't anything new. I don't care what religion you are, what church you go to, it's nothing new. It's been around and documented in every religion, back to the sixth century, to Buddha, to first-century Jesus, first-century Rabbi Hillel. And I hope you remember this, that when it's your turn to speak to our city, and when it's your turn to prove that you're representing us, and you're representing the citizens here, because I have a feeling that our mayor will be applauding for you. I didn't see any of you applauding for him, and I think you should remember the golden rule. And I think you should remember the golden rule. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Susan. Danita?
Today, my comments pertain primarily to the council members. Before this evening's comments, council members had not yet publicly denounced the potential for Camp Affleba Page to house violent criminal offenders. I want to know why this is. Is it because the council members are apprehensive about retribution from the members of the groups that they are members of, such as Cassie or BLM or other social inclusion groups? What is wrong with publicly letting your constituents know where you stand on issues? I know there are many residents within the city who have emailed the council members and the residents have yet to receive a response. Although the mayor and council members collectively sent a letter to county supervisor Barker's office, to me, this just doesn't seem like it's enough. Mayor Hepburn was at the rally over the weekend, showing his support of the residents protesting. A resident shared her comments with me and said that she had spoke with Mrs. Carter and stated that she was allowing the mayor to be the spokesperson on behalf of the council. But as Mrs. Carter and Mr. Davis so rudely and inappropriately stated at the district voting meeting on November 15th, they downplayed the importance of the mayoral duties, stating that it was ceremonial. This is an instance where it's not ceremonial. This is where we need to know where people stand and if they have the backs of the residents that vote for these people. Now she wants to hide behind his lead. You can't have it both ways, Mrs. Carter. Mayor Hepburn is making his voice heard, not just in letters and attending meetings in person, but he's giving interviews on the radio and television at every chance he can, standing shoulder to shoulder with the residents of the city that he cares about us and our safety. Again, the city is failing its residents in terms of notifying them of important issues. You brought up the fact that you sent a flyer or you posted on social media that the opening for the Youth in Action Family Committee, but not once did anybody on this council announce it at previous meetings that there was an opening for that. Yes, it was on the agenda for the Youth in Action Committee, but we can't always watch every single meeting on Zoom. I mean, we'd be watching meetings all day long. There's development, there's youth in action, there's city council, there's planning commission. I mean, we have jobs, we have families, we have lives. But as the city council, you have the responsibility to notify people and it's something as simple as an announcement that you do at the end of the meetings. You announce, you attended this group and what the status is and, you know, upcoming events. Why wasn't that on there? And so I concur with Kathy's comments that it just seems, you know, and yes, he might have only been the only applicant for the job and that you did it by default and he might be more than qualified, but, you know, for the rest of us who don't know what's going on, it just seems very suspicious, for lack of a better term. In terms of notifying, why is it the city of San Dimas sent out a mailer informing all of their residents about the potential for Glen Rocky to be increased population for the same juvenile offenders, yet City of Laverne again has not sent any kind of notification to their residents? I understand the city cannot afford to send mailers to every resident for every issue, but with all of the years of experience that this council has, they should know when something is imperative, when items are serious enough to permanently change the environment of the city and especially when it involves the safety of the residents. I received an email from the probation department this afternoon stating that tomorrow's meeting had been rescheduled as Ms. Berry had spoke earlier. But why is this information not on the city's website? It still has the flyer for tomorrow's meeting on there. We spent over $300,000 on our IT department for this city and they can't do something as simple as change the flyer on the city website? And that was as of 3:45 this afternoon. I have been to umpteen city council meetings and I have continually attended and spoken at, and I think the city council and staff are tired of hearing from me complain about the failure of transparency and notifying residents. But until anything changes, the only conclusion that us residents can make is that this council does not care. A large part of the reason is these radical changes are taking place and the inadequate level of concern for the residents unless there's an ulterior motive in which we have no knowledge of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Danita. Anyone else wish to speak on public comment? Ms. Berry?
Good evening. I'll make it short and sweet. Just a couple things. I've had a lot of people asking me questions because all the stuff going on with the Affleba Page and where can I find this and where can I find that? So I've been looking on the website frequently. It's hard to find stuff. It's really hard. I know that for that situation, there is a little key point on the front page. But when I'm looking for other stuff, I think we got somebody hired to work on the website a while back and I haven't heard anything about that for quite a while. But it is really difficult to find just information. It's cluttered. When you look under a tab that you think makes sense that you would find it, you don't see it there. It's somewhere else. So I would love to hear, maybe early next year, what's going on with the website and updating it and maybe streamlining it, simplifying it, making it a little harder to find, or easier to find, not harder, please. No. But as far as like, we do hear often, it's been on the website, it's been on the website and things are hard to find there unless you're specifically looking every week. Is there something flown here somewhere? So just something to think about. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Anybody else? Jennifer?
Hi, Jennifer Simison. I just wanted to know if any of you had the pleasure of three hours of listening to the probation meeting today? And I was looking for it for any little secrets or any little things that they're working on or looking at or undermining because they've been so non-transparent. They throw this on to us at Christmas, you know. So what I simplify, what I did hear one thing is, you know how they did the report and they studied all their camps and how they thought all the camps were doing and all the teachers felt depressed and they don't feel they're getting enough support? And the only thing they talked about was how Affleba Page was the only successful camp because it's a fire camp. And the boy, the young kids actually are doing something there and they're feeling that they're going forward. And I can't for the life of me, with everything going so bad, why would they take the one good thing that's working for the youth and get rid of it and move it in? So I don't know. I just think if we push more that we're already doing good, you need something good. Leave what's here and let us continue on because we have Leroy's Boys Home and David Margaret and we have just so much that we do here and we've done and we love to do and we step out. Our town was chosen to give all the free food through the police department, was that from LA County or something? We had something, because they know we're a giving community. Then looking at it and thinking of it as far as construction of a new site up there, I think it would have so many constraints, because I know a lot about constraints. And with the fish and wildlife, you can't build within 200 feet of the building. I believe the building was built in 58 and you know that to do a retrofit, I know they're LA County, but I don't know, are they on septic or are they connected to our sewer? Because if, I know we had a friend who's in Claremont that if she didn't connect to the sewer, they couldn't do any construction. They couldn't add a pool unless they connected the sewer. Well, if Affleba Page has to connect to sewer to make this thing larger, those are our sewer lines and they can't have them. Okay, so they're special thing. And the other thought is, because our property, when all the orchards were there, we moved here in 79, so we've been here 42 years. We moved right on Country Club Drive before the golf course even went in. Timmy was our neighbor. And everything north of Golden Hills was orchard still. The DeWinters and all the Sloans and all the people, all of us up there were on well water. I don't know if they're on domestic water. So if they're not on domestic water, then they can't put the upgraded fire system that needs to be here because they don't have the pressure and you can't count on a well because we went through that. And I also, we talked to Steve Johnson and we're trying to figure out our Steve Johnson engineer, Steve Johnson. And if they have a well that they're using there for the water and the things, it's probably out of compliance, but they're sitting up there hidden away and not doing their thing. So I don't know if they're on our water. But I think trying to find other things besides you, we don't want you, but you can't build here. 200 feet within all their property lines, because that's the new code, the fire department. I know LA County is the ready, set, go, and that's a huge thing on LA County. So I'm just hoping maybe we can look at other things besides, we don't want them there. Affleba Page Fire Camp's been a wonderful asset to these young kids, so we shouldn't take that away. And number two, let's work on building permits that they can't get and they can't have our sewers. Thank you.
Jennifer. Thank you, Jennifer, but you missed electricity and gas. You didn't cover those two.
Well, I know-
We got the water and the sewer, so thank you.
They have power.
I love your construction experience, which is vast. Thank you.
Thirty years here.
Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Bowen? And then Lilly?
Evening, counsel, again. I'd like to, I don't know if I'll get an answer or not, but people have been talking about things that come in the mail and we've had two huge issues, voting and the camps. But in my mail, I believe in my water bill, I received this. And it's a notice about the materials placed in the green organics chart. So I don't know if the city paid for that. It does have a city seal on it. And then the other half, it was the California drought notice. We can either afford to do this, put this in our bills, but for some reason, for the major things, we cannot seem to do that. My main issue right now is, there was a closed session tonight, I believe, regarding a homeowners' association possible lawsuit. So I don't know if you're going to talk about that before we close tonight. If not, I'd like to read the letter to the city.
You can read that.
Okay.
Correct, Mr. Russi? It's public knowledge.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Kress? Mr. Kress?
Well, I mean, the council has all seen the letter, so-
Well, I'd like to make sure the citizens are aware of it.
Yes, sir.
I mean, if you're going to address it before we leave, great.
I don't think we'll be doing that, but you could read the letter, though.
Okay.
Please.
Let me read the letter so everybody, every citizen will know. This came to Mr. Kress last week and it says, "This firm represents Sierra Laverne Homeowners Association as its legal counsel. The Board of Directors requested that we contact you regarding the City of Laverne's recent decision to draw a council district map in violation of California Election Code Section 21601. Specifically, the council district map violates Election Code Section 61601(c)(2), which states, 'The council shall adopt district boundaries using the following criteria set forth in the order of priority. One, to the extent practable, council districts shall be geographically contiguous. Areas that meet only at the points of adjoining corners are not contiguous. Areas that are separated by water and not connected by a bridge, tunnel, or regular ferry service are not contiguous.'" I believe the city met that criteria. Two, 'To the extent practical, the geographic integrity of a local neighborhood or local community of interest shall be respected in a manner that minimizes its division.' A quote, 'community of interest,' unquote, 'is a population that shares common social or economic interests that should be included within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation. Communities of interest do not include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates.' Without a doubt, the association is a community of interest. The association is a specific neighborhood that shares common social and economic interests, including maintaining common areas, the streets that serve the community exclusively. Nonetheless, the City of Laverne's council district map adopted via ordinance 1107 unnecessarily and illegally divides that association. The city apparently took great pains to divide the association between districts three and four. It created a dividing line down the middle of Robelane, Trickling Creek Drive, and Eagle Drive for no defensible reason. The council certainly could have made geographically contiguous map and maintained the geography, the geographic integrity of the association, but it did not. The association suspects that the council adopted this specific map for distinctly political purposes favoring one party in violation of Election Code Section 21601d. The association demands that the City of Laverne immediately halt its plan to adopt the drawn council district map as of January 2022. Suppose the city refuses to redraw the map to conform with the election codes. In that case, the association will have no choice but to file an action for immediate injunction, immediate injunctive relief to maintain the status quo. The city has until December 21st, 2021, to agree to redraw the council maps or the association will file a lawsuit. Please do not hesitate to contact me to discuss regards the Krieger Law Firm. I want everybody to know this because apparently our association, of which I live in, is the only association in the city that was separated. And in fact, they came in our gate, our private gate, down our streets and exited our exit gate, dividing 141 homes, I believe, 53 to 88. Nowhere else in the city was that done, as far as I know. And we brought it up before this happened. One of our neighbors brought it up, explained it, walked through it, almost to a point of this letter, but you all ignored it. So, Mr. Davis, you said you wanted to do districts because you were afraid of a lawsuit? You may have got one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Anyone else wish to speak? Danita? Did you?
Not on this, not on this subject. Okay.
I'm sorry, Danita. Sorry, you spoke already. Lilly?
Good evening. Merry Christmas. First, I forgot to say later, okay? I'm Lily Breno, citizen of Laverne. I come here all the time. I just always like to sit here, like my job, to watch everybody, watch things going on in the city because I care about my future, my kids' future. So I just want to talk about the transparency about this voting and this campaign. I think since the summertime or on Zoom meeting, I heard about people talk about this voting coming into our city. It should be on some news or some official letter. Okay? So I start to question every single meeting, when will district voting get started? We want to take a look at that. I want to see the map, how to do the math things, right? So I keep questioning every single time. So but still end up, when it get open to take the comment, the comment whatever on Zoom or here, up to 90% resident oppose that. We don't want five districts and then end up saying, even four districts, fine, okay, but we just want the- But we just want the mayor, elected mayor, not rotating mayor. We keep over and over for at least like two months talk about this topic for comment, but still end up vote to five. I'm kind of very upset for that. You know how many people still first time heard about that? Even this, this days, we for the camp patch, we protest, we reach media together. So many residents still the first time heard about this voting. What, we are not want in Laverne? So why yesterday, I mean, last Saturday, we have a protest already at the corner district. I'm pretty say Mr. Mayor's there and media's there. Actually CBS plays three times at night, so it's very big news. So we're already in public, but so many residents, they really first time heard about this voting. Why? They really not get on Facebook. Do you, why you do you think about we would go to the city website to look for something like one lie there? And how many people get kicked off from Facebook last, from last election? Most of my conservative friend who support, you know, not, not the president right now, get kicked out from Facebook. They never come back again. I tried to stay in Facebook because I have 100 parents, what with me to fight for school board meeting for the Bonita District. It's going to teach education right after this vacation, how many people noticed that? So this is transparency is definitely not enough. So I just incident, just now, I find the district voting article post yesterday, upload yesterday. So how many people we really see a lie there? Okay, nobody. I'm just, what, why every time I find it first? Because I always on social media, doing something, searching something. I say, oh, upload yesterday. So I say, is it done deal? I don't know, but I'm, of course, I'm not happy with that because if this district voting staff on somebody say they lose voting rights, so it has to be district voting. I don't know who really, really present me as the agent, something like this, okay? I don't care. I am in district one, okay? I don't think in the future, who will care camp has if it really happen? Only the people live there. That district, I think it's belong to our mayor Tim Hebbin, that's that area, right? So do you think other district, ask your heart, do you mind? If they don't have right to vote for you, are you really care about the camp hat will happen? End up the result we, we don't like? The worst result, they update as prison? So who gonna worry about that? Actually, a lot of Chinese friend, my friend, they live there, they just know this in Saturday. They want to come today, they don't even know how to come. They want to do the Zoom meeting. I registered Zoom meeting, I didn't get the Zoom meeting link after the second email. So I come here, even I was very busy tonight, I still come here because I didn't get the second link, okay? So the people who try to come, ask me for link just now. So lack of transparency, very bad. So I just want to, I don't want to come here every time I kind of like a mad person. I always good, only met here, okay? So, so I just thinking it's really, really not enough. So we has to have something important issue, has to do mail. Facebook is not official to reach your resident. And then I'm thinking, why only Tim Hebbin show up in September, Saturday, or any other interview, even that they in Mesa? I invite Apple Time, they did very good article in Chinese and English, only interview Tim Hebbin and Carter. And then where's other three? I think you guys, I couldn't see you guys. And then you already disappear. Meeting couldn't find you to ask you confirm if you support or not. So I, I don't think it's right. So if, if after this voting, will any other four council really care about district? I don't know what the number, okay? Camp path? I doubt it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lilly. Anyone else supposed to speak?
And if there's those that are online, please use the raise your hand feature.
Let's go to the phones. I think we have one hand raised, Mr. Allison.
Hello, everybody that have been there in the city council. I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Paz for 38 years of service. In 2016, him and our, my wife and I decided that we would reach out to our police chiefs to start a conversation, just to get a better idea of the experiences that people were having in our city and opening a pathway of dialogue. And Chief Scott Pickwick at the time was very receptive. He was then Captain Nick Paz was also in on that meeting. And both of them were very instrumental in helping us bridge lots of gaps that existed between the university and the police department. And if it wasn't for their leadership, I thought that there were several people who got the opportunity to be heard when they felt that they wouldn't have otherwise had that opportunity. So over 38 years, I know that that's just my small testimonial for who he is and what he's done for this city. I love Laverne, I think Laverne's a great city. I think it's had a lot to do with his leadership. And so, you know, with his going out of retirement, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the Laverne Police Department. Thank you to Chief Paz and the Paz family for giving us such a great man that would serve the city and provide us the leadership that he has. I look forward to working with Captain Flores or soon to be Chief Flores in helping to continue to make the city the great city that it is. But, you know, to close out the year, I just want to make an expression of gratitude to the chief, to the police department, to the men and women who serve the city to make it the city that it is. Thank you all.
Anybody else supposed to speak on public comment? We're going to go and close public comment, we're going to come up with a dais. Mr. Crosby.
Would you like me to answer a couple of questions?
Oh, yes, would you please? If you can answer some of those questions, please.
Clarification if I can. The comment about the posting of our website, yeah, probably at 3:45, the information wasn't up. It, I checked it while we were sitting here. It was sometime, we didn't get it till almost 3:30. So that information has been corrected and we have the information out there regarding tomorrow's board supervisors meeting, as well as the meeting being canceled or postponed until January 5th. As far as the question regarding the organics, yes, the city did pay for that flyer to go in there because the new rate goes into effect January 1st. And as council member, we approved those back in June and we wanted to make sure the council was aware. And I think Mayor Potem, you're going to speak to a couple of those things. And lastly, there won't be, just because there won't be any comment made, the council did discuss the letter in closed session. They are aware of it and there's no further action being taken at this time. And lastly, I would like to also express thanks to Chief Paz. The end of this month, the 29th, I believe it is, will be his last day and it has been a real pleasure in working with him through what had were some challenging times when he first came in as police chief, but to a very successful point that I think we sit with the department now and look very forward to moving forward with Colleen, but I will miss Chief Paz. Thank you.
Do you want me to talk about the website?
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. And there was a question about the website and where that was at, and I know that's JR's project, so I'll let him speak to that.
Yeah, we've been diligently working behind the scenes, making the preparations to convert with Civic Plus. And if you remember, council took action to approve them as the one to redesign our website. So we've been doing lots of fun stuff, taking photos all over town, working on branding for the website, picking out color themes and all those types of things that have to be done while the, the transition happens. And it looks like the first reveal that staff will get, because now they, we picked out all those things and now they're building the site and making sure that all, we have a lot of pages of information that have to be transferred over, so they're doing that work now. And it looks like the first reveal will be the first part of April. That's the first reveal for staff, so if we need to do any tweaks or changes, then we would make those. So the hope is by the end of April that we'll have the, the website online.
Thank you, JR. Can't happen too soon. Thank you very much. Mr. Crosby.
Hold on, sir.
Hold it, gotta make him lie.
Can you all hear me now? Thank you for letting me be remote tonight. This meeting was too important to, to miss because of all the things that are happening in, in Laverne. I believe the council stands together against the changes of, of the youth camps and appreciate the entire council for, for doing that. As though we, we cannot always be at every event, we do communicate and appreciate our, our stance together, as the stance actually in what I've heard all of Laverne together. The, the change of the dates from tomorrow's meeting to, to January 5th really helps unite all of us together too, so that we can keep pushing and keep the word up so that we, we keep moving forward and discussing the points where Laverne and the strengths that we do. Thank you, Ms. Simison, today for those points to add in your, your, your letters to, to the supervisors and to the probation department. I think we need to stand together and united on, on this part. I'd like to wish everybody a, a happy holidays, be safe out there. And one last thing to really thank Chief Paz for everything that he's done. I know you're going to be missed and congratulations to the two penings this, this, this afternoon. And I'll just cut it short though, but thank you for letting me be here tonight remotely so that we can not miss the important part.
We are. Who'd like to go next? Councilor Law.
So just a thank you too, I wanted to give to Mrs. Simison as well because I think those are the different perspectives that do have to be brought up to the county supervisors so that it's not just, again, not my backyard. So I think having all those perspectives is really important. When I was at that meeting, I think that was the benefit of having the public comment because you did hear from so many different people and perspectives that may not have occurred. And I know that right after that meeting, you know, I had talked to Bob and I had talked to some residents who had either worked at those camps or worked with that population, and they provided some very important insight. There was a juvenile delinquency attorney there as well who provided her insight. And those important factual pieces of information were also incorporated into that letter that was sent on behalf of all council. Because again, I think the more perspectives and the more points that we can make about why this is not the right place, rather than just saying it's not the right place, is going to be important in hopefully persuading people. To the mayor's point earlier and as a reminder, since Solis Stout now does have a part of Laverne, include her in your comments now as well. And I think because we do have till January 5th, there's more time now to try to rally folks to get that information out there. And so, you know, I think hearing those different perspectives is good because I think sometimes you see, you know, the same like email that people tell you, hey, go send out this email, and it says the exact same thing. That kind of flies over people's, can fly over people's heads. But I think when they start seeing all these different perspectives and all these different points that people are making, they start realizing, hey, this isn't just one reason it's bad, there's a lot of reasons it's not bad or it's not good. So I just wanted to share that. The other thing I wanted to share is the University of Laverne had a blood drive last week. For those of you who may or may not have donated blood in the past, the Red Cross is experiencing a record deficiency in blood due to a lot of different reasons. And as someone who's had a friend who was not able to get a transfusion recently because there isn't enough blood available, I encourage you to please consider, if you've never done it, or if you have done it, to consider making an appointment. It's really easy. You can go to the Red Cross website, find a blood drive near you or schedule an appointment, but you can really help save a lot of lives. So if you are so inclined, I hate needles. And, you know, if I can sit through it, anyone can. So highly encourage folks to do that. And I want to say thank you to all the members of the community who did go out to the blood drive because I did see quite a few residents who just ended going on to the university's campus. They took walk-ins and, and everything else, so that was really nice to see. I also want to send a thank you to Chief Paz for his years of service. He's always had an open door whenever I've had a question or didn't understand something about what was happening. He has been more than kind and more than generous with his time in terms of answering those questions. So I echo the comments that have been made to him. I think to stay 38 years in any one place in this day and age is, is pretty miraculous, pretty impressive. So thank you to Chief Paz, looking forward to working with our incoming chief and really thankful for all of our staff and people who make this city run because without them, we wouldn't have the place we have now. And last but not least, happy holidays to everybody, whatever you celebrate, whether it's Christmas, Kwanzaa, just whatever it is, have a good time with your families, be safe, be kind to another, one another, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Councilor Law. Councilor Crosby, or, I'm sorry. Robin Carter.
Close, Crosby, Carter. And I too want to start by thanking Nick Paz, our police chief, for being our chief here in the city. The mayor and I were both on the committee when we hired him. And it was our honor to choose Nick. He was committed to our community. He has lived in Laverne. He just cares about everybody and everything in this community. And he is just a wonderful mentor to our new chief that's coming on. She will tell you that firsthand, that he has guided her through this process to understand all about Laverne, and she speaks very highly of him. And so Nick, you'll be missed and thank you for dedicating your time to Laverne. The other item I'd like to talk about, it's so appropriate being the end of the year. And I hope we can start January 2022 with a fresh new year. So often, comments are made here that are statements and a lot of times false statements. We under public comment cannot answer or speak to you on that, but it is disheartening to me because the fact is, we can't answer a statement. But if you put it into a question, call us, ask us, and then after the meeting, we could discuss it. But how do, how do you defend a statement? But there's a couple of things that I really want to clarify so the general public out there knows. I get so often people to say, you know, why don't you speak up and, you know, let them know that this happened or this happened? But, you know, so often it's like it's just, it's not worth it. Those that know me know how I work and, you know, that I had the interest of this community firsthand. Kathy Nuland wrote all of us. And so to Donita's statement, where do we all stand on this? Kathy Nuland posted it on Nextdoor. She asked each and every one of us and we all said how we felt and it was all posted right there. So right there is, you know, you could ask, why, where do you stand on this? I would like to see that in the new year, that we are more compassionate and caring about everybody in this community. And as far as the mayor, just this morning, we did a breakfast to recognize our wonderful employees over in the city yard, our street maintenance, our water department. And it, there's, it's such a refreshing feeling, but he and I were having a comfortable talk about just me thanking him for being on the media, handling his speeches. And, you know, we were all at that meeting, you know, Rick had a school board meeting, so he couldn't be at that Oak Mesa meeting, but we were there. And, and that is where the one statement upsets me is that the one woman that wrote me and said, "Why didn't you speak out at Oak Mesa?" And that's where I said, "Our mayor was her spokesperson." I wanted to hear from the community. There were so many people at Oak Mesa, it was so impressive. I wanted to hear from all the residents. And so Tim spoke very eloquently, speaking for how the council felt. And I applaud him on that. And so try to understand that we live here, we care about this community. To Lilly's point, I live up there too, very close to Tim. And, but it doesn't matter, it's this whole community as a one that we have to work together. We have to fight this whole thing. whole thing. And we have been, we've been writing letters, you can see our post, anyone that has been writing to me, and, um, some are nasty emails, but it's like I'm trying to get out the point, you know, and it's, it's, to me, ridiculous, we are human beings too. Ask us, would you want us to treat you that way, is how I'd want you to think about it. So, I would like to ask that the new year, that everybody really thinks how we talk to one another, call us, I don't get phone calls, if you have a question, call me, you know, and it, um, just, a point of interest is that if we want to be successful, we need to work together. And so, really think of that, and call us, let us help you, and work together, and, you know, we can learn from you, so let us know that. So, other than that, you know, I do wish you all a Merry Christmas, and enjoy your families, Christmas morning's coming up, and on a positive note, and I know Mayor's gonna touch on it too, we, our committee has been working very hard, we still need some volunteers to come out, so Mayor, would you touch on that and go further?
Thank you, Councilmember, Mayor Protem Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start there, yes, so it's not too late for anybody who wishes to volunteer to help Santa deliver goodie bags to the residents in our community, so go to the website and sign up, and it may be a few more clicks than we wanna click to get to where we gotta get to. But I work for Southern California Edison, and our website here at Laverne is so much superior to, to Southern California Edison's internal website, but I don't wanna always be benchmarking off of my own company. Um, but please, join us, it'll be a, a fun time, it's always a good time to be out there traveling through our sea, our streets and seeing our community walk out of their houses, all as a neighborhood around the same time, and, and see Santa and wave to him, but mostly turn to the neighbors and spend a few minutes out there. So, in some cases, if we have to turn around and come by again, ten or so minutes later, people are still out there communing, and that's what really helps to make our community special. In addition to that, um, yes, there are new waste rules coming out to, uh, managing, for residents managing food waste, um, into your green waste. Um, I haven't received all the details, I asked for some, 'cause one of my biggest concerns is, what do I do with liquid food waste? Do I just go ahead and dump it in my green can, or should that be in a container? So, if we get more information, I'll be happy to share it, but, uh, hopefully, the, uh, the rules are being disseminated and hopefully, somebody can answer that question for me. So, um, not necessary to count, uh, city staff or whatnot, but out in the ether world, I Googled it once and didn't get an answer, so, um, there is a challenge to information out there. Um, I want to, uh, follow that by saying, um, I made remarks earlier about, uh, Chief Nick Paz retiring, um, I, I wanna further my comment on that to recognize that not every transition is graceful and, and gracious, and, and all roses, occasionally there are thorns going on, and I know that, that Chief Paz recently experienced a death in his extended fam, uh, family of choice, I'll say, and, and I know that is, is making this whole transition very challenging, so my heart reaches out to you, Nick. Um, uh, the, the, um, the, 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 the challenge that we face as a community, and it is the entire community, and I believe we're all supportive and together on this, so I, it does dishearten me some when people start to try to say that somebody's doing it better than others, but I do believe that Mayor Tim Hepburn was representing the entire council when he spoke at Oak Mesa, and, and I know I was gathering information, so the next morning, I felt motivated to write a letter to the, um, uh, the, uh, sup, uh, supervisors, as well as the commission, and, and provide information that I heard from our residents that I thought were salient. One was a higher fire concern, and as an Edison employee, high fire is very important and is top of mind for all of us, so I wrote about the high fire, I wrote about the limited access, should there need to be services provided, and that being not as convenient as the map might otherwise show, and I wrote that the aging infrastructure was really in, in, in poor shape and would need a huge amount of, of uplift to make it ready. I've added a few more of this, so I'm gonna get to send another letter and talk about the current program, about being the fire program at, at the camps, about the sewer receptic, as well as water system questions. Unfortunately, um, the electric utility is unlike many of the other services, and that's one of the fundamental challenges in California, because the California state law says that if someone wants electric service, the electric utility must provide it, no matter where they are, which is one reason why, in the past several years with climate change, um, the, the wildfires in California have really been challenging, but that's a whole different piece. The, the pieces that I would encourage our residents, 'cause I think we all stand together on this, I don't think anybody's trying to stand apart, I think we're all standing together on this, is capture pieces of information that, I mean, if people ask me where I was, I was sending them my letter, so they could capture snippets out of that, or take the whole thing in full and send it off. But I, I do encourage you, as, as Councilmember Lau said, don't just capture an entire letter and send it off, 'cause it'll look the same, and after a while, it kinda numbs the mind as they're seeing it, so capture a little bit of, of the council letter, capture a little bit of my letter if you see it, capture a little bit of what, uh, recently got posted, even supported by Supervisor Barker, to identify. So, capture pieces of those, capture some piece from the, um, Captain soon-to-be Chief, Colleen Flores's letter, capture from the, uh, Superintendent Cole, um, Carl Cole's letter, San Dimas's letter, wherever, just keep it interesting and keep people thinking about it, and keep sending those letters, because, um, yes, public comment's important, but mostly public comment is to staff. In this case, in the case of the commission, the decision-makers are receiving information from the staff, but if they're also receiving emails, I think we'll see movement, which I think we already have with Councilmember Barker. So, so I don't want to see us turn and start to fire at each other about this issue, because this is one issue where I think we are standing together, I think we're supporting each other, it may not be as readily visible to folks that we are supporting each other, but, um, this is one that, that, that even me in Southern Laverne, I'm concerned about what's happening near Laverne, 'cause these camps really aren't in Laverne, they're in LA County, which is one reason why there's this whole notion that, well, we don't see the increase in services to county services, of course not, because it's really gonna be the burden of Laverne services first, because we're the closest. So, keep it up, um, keep up the good work on that. Let's see, lastly, I just wanna wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Uh, we just, uh, went through the Fourth Sunday of Advent, where we're i- in an expecting mode, and, um, you know, two thousand plus years ago, somebody came, uh, you know, got incarnate, Immanuel, he came in person, his physical being, um, in an unusual place, in a place at the time that was not well-known, in a, in a facility that was for animals, not humans. So, we all need to be looking out for each other and, and, and caring for each other, and, and I think that's a good reminder for this time. Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, thank you, thank you, council. Just a couple items here. Um, two weekends ago, Saturday, we had Winter Wonderland, I don't know if anybody went and visited it, but, uh, Avon Duran, uh, Community Services Manager, did an unbelievable job with all the help, from different departments, obviously, but I've never seen so many people in so many booths, this was one of, it's the twenty-second, we, we missed a few because of the COVID, but, uh, they did a fantastic job, I just wanna put on mark, Mr. Russi, the, all the staff, uh, the kids were having a ball, and the vendors that were there, I know personally, I spent a lot of money on some great stuff, we have wreaths on our door, all the kids have a new wreath on their door, so that was a good thing, but, uh, kudos to the entire staff, they did a fantastic job. Uh, this last Saturday, um, I don't know if anybody's familiar with this, but, uh, it's Wreaths Across America, I'll just read you a little snippet, uh, this was for the cemetery on B Street, the Laverne Cemetery for veterans, it's celebrating veterans with wreaths. Uh, Wreaths Across America is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization founded to continue and expand the annual wreath-laying ceremony at Arlington National Cemetery. Begun by Maine businessman, Moro Worcester, in nineteen ninety-two, the organization's mission is, remember, honor, and teach. Is carried out in part each year by coordinating wreath-laying ceremonies in this, in, in December at Arlington, as well as at thousands of veteran cemeteries and then other locations in all fifty states and beyond. Uh, and I'll, I'm gonna go ahead and post this, there are donations for this, but it's an unbelievable cause, I was there, they invited me, we had the ROTC from Lutheran High School was there, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, Brownies, our Band of Brothers, the VFW posts were there, that, that posted the colors, we had a couple Sheriff's Department, but they did a fantastic job, and this is something I told them next year, that I'd like to see hundreds of people out there laying wreaths on. We have people, veterans, that are from the Spanish War, the Civil War, I think there's six to eight Purple Heart veterans, nurses, so, you know, this is, this is about our community, and it's really important, they did a fantastic job, so this, uh, we're gonna put, I'd like you to post this, just to give information on this. Uh, the next one is, is that, um, I also wanna celebrate Mr. Paz, um, he's done a fantastic job, but I think one of his biggest jobs, as Mr. Davis had, uh, had kinda clued on a little bit, succession planning, through the city and with Colleen Flores bringing her on, not only, uh, just a new chief, but also to, to learn the ropes with him and change the direction of our police department, and he has been amazingly open with this, and Colleen has been able to implement stuff from her experience with her experience to make an unbelievable succession planning. He will be missed, and again, to Mr. Davis's, he lost a love of his life, and, uh, and hearts and prayers go out to he and his family, and, uh, it's been a real rough few months for him, and, uh, like I say, we, we really do appreciate that. Um, I wanna also thank the City of San Dimas for fighting with us, the alphabet page deal. Also, I wanna encourage, I did have a conversation with, uh, Michael Almos, with, is the, uh, Councilmember of, of Glendora today, uh, also was on the phone with Becky Chevlin, who is going to be heir apparent mayor of the City of Monrovia, and she's also the president of the COG, which I happen to serve as the first VP. I'm gonna talk to her to see if we can do this as the COG, which is thirty-three cities, three water municipalities, and three supervisory districts, so, we, this is, this is not stopping, and also, Mr., I know that Bob, uh, Russi is also working with, we wanna get Claremont on board with this too, so, um, again, positive stuff, work as a community, we cannot drop the ball on this. As John Blick and staff stated, he said, this is a Laverne issue, not north, south, east, west, Lower Laverne, this is a Laverne issue that will change the course of our neighborhood. So, we must focus on this, this is a man with twenty-seven years of experiences being our mayor, and I'll tell you what, he is impassioned about this, and so, um, we need to focus on this as a group, we need to be together on this, not chip at each other, be together on this, we must all focus on this. And again, I thank all the residents that got all the news media out there, this doesn't stop now, it continues, we must fight this. Um, I had a couple other things here, but you know, and, uh, the most important thing is, enjoy your Christmas holiday, Merry Christmas to everybody, enjoy your families, enjoy those people you haven't seen, take a phone call, call those people, go see them. Be careful right now with the, the COVID variant, but you know what, we need to enjoy our holidays with our families, and everyone have a very, very Merry Christmas. Mr. Russi, we have a closed session, is that correct?
We do. It is conference with legal counsel litigation, um, we will be discussing the national opioid settlement with manufacturers and distributors, um, pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six dot nine, nothing to report after.
I wanna say one more thing, I'm really proud of all you residents, that, uh, just the show of togetherness and people jumping at it and getting this in short notice, and we were not given a lot of notice, I'm proud of all of you, because united we stand, divided we fall, let's not forget that. So, I'm really proud of every resident here in Laverne that was out at the, at the, you know, out of our, on Saturday, but also the fact at Oak Mesa, and, and it's holiday time, but you know what? There's a reason why this all happens like this, and at this time of year, you know, you take your eye off the ball, we can't take the eye off the ball, we gotta keep driving forward with the pedal full on, so, um, being that said, we have a closed session, um, we will be recessing into closed session, due to limited need, uh, we will be not having our meeting on January third, but we'll be keeping information going through all of our council members and the city on this issue right now, so, uh, what, if we have to do something special, we will, but I think it's more information getting out to the community. Um, we will be, our next regular scheduled meeting, city council meeting, will be on January seventeenth, twenty, wait.
That's a holiday.
Oh, we're not gonna do that, because that's a holiday.
It's a three-day weekend.
No, goes on Monday, January seventeenth, and Observation Legal Holiday, the next regular meeting in Laverne City Council is scheduled for Tuesday, January eighteenth, at six thirty PM. And, being that said, it's eight fifteen, I call this meeting to order, Merry Christmas, everybody.